Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 2, 2012, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. Pleasure to see so many of you here tonight. I think we have a special treat for us as well, so I'm looking forward to that. We met at 6:00 this evening in a work session to discuss logistics and plans for some of the advisory boards. We acted on a few items, including extending terms of some of the boards that the county commissioners have established from two consecutive two-year terms to three consecutive two-year terms being allowed. And the reason for that is oftentimes that we actually have difficulty finding people who will step up and volunteer to serve on these boards. So just like to make note of that. If anyone is interested, there's an application form on the county website, and I think we're planning in the focus on Currituck to mail out information regarding these boards and appointments that may be coming up along with the forms, so everybody has an opportunity to participate, because we would like your input and your help in areas in which you have some interest. Thanks very much. This evening, we'll start off with the invocation led by Reverend Glenn McCraney, who's a former Navy chaplain. If you would do the invocation for us, please, sir, and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Will you please stand? Dear God, during this Fourth of July week, we pause for a few moments to give you thanks for a nation conceived in liberty, dedicated to the principle that all people are endowed by you with certain rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Give to our country zeal for justice that we may use our liberty in accordance with your grace and will. Grant your divine grace and wisdom upon our county commissioners as they meet tonight. Instill within them holy hearts with a holy purpose, with visions of service to the people of this county. May they feel the deep responsibilities of their elected offices, enlighten their hearts and minds that they may hold the ever-dawning of a bright and new future for our beloved Currituck County. As residents of this historical area, may we be a grateful people, seeking to serve rather than only being served. May we celebrate this week through rich gifts of life, freedom, and liberty which has been bestowed upon us by the sacrifice of others. Grant us to know which way to turn, and always may we live our life and cherish your daily mercies. For these things we pray, in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Thank you, Reverend McCraney. And now, I understand, the senior bell choir is going to perform some patriotic music for our entertainment. Thank you for coming tonight.
My name's Beth O'Shields, and I am the Assistant Coordinator at the Currituck County Senior Center, and it's my honor to lead the Currituck Senior Bell Choir. Tonight, we want to thank the Board of Commissioners for inviting us to come and perform for you, and we're going to play the Battle Hymn of the Republic and "God Bless America," so we hope you enjoy.
Thank you. (Music) (Applause) Thank you very much for coming. We certainly appreciated that and enjoyed it. We're going to give you a brief moment to vacate. I understand everybody wants to go home and watch Jeopardy instead of playing with us tonight, so we'll give you a few minutes to vacate. Ms. Keane, some other folks came in after I began the meeting. Would you like to take the sign-up list and see if any of them would like to add their names to public comment? And Commissioners, the next item we have is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? We'll go ahead and... Okay. Hearing none, then I'd have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd certainly just like to say very happy Fourth of July to the seniors who performed here tonight for all of us. Thank you all very much. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. (Applause) Okay. All right, we approved the agenda while they were moving forward, since we had no changes to it. So this brings us to the next order of business, which is the public comment period. I have four persons that had signed up for public comment, and this is for an opportunity for anyone who'd like to address the Board of Commissioners with any items of concern, any questions, or just basically tell us how you feel about certain things going on. And I'll lead off with the first person on the list, Jim Bickford, and if you'd come forward and...
Did I skip that?
No one signed up.
Oh, for that, okay, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, I had an eye doctor's appointment today. My eyes are still dilated. I can barely read this stuff, so bear with me tonight. I'm sorry. So I don't have a public comment list. Nobody signed up for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if no one signed up for public comment, I'd like to make a comment.
Well, I was going to ask and say, because public comment does allow people to do. I know somebody, some folks came in afterward. Are any of you here that would like to speak during the public comment period, we allow you three minutes to voice any concerns or questions that you have? No, hearing no one? Ms. Gilbert and I will defer the floor to you.
Okay. I've been approached by phone and emails and calls about forming a committee of young adults to talk about some educational pieces. There's, you know, we've lost another young life in the county just recently, and the young adults of the community want to form some type of education group so that they can educate. We haven't collectively gotten all the ideas today, but I've spoken to a few people. I've talked to the sheriff, and she's on board with it. But I am going to take the lead on this and form a committee with those young folks. The people that have brought it to my attention have my contact information, but those of you in the high school, junior high, elementary, whichever, I've had the parents call me and approach me about doing some education on pedestrian and driving. Each one of us have distractions when we're driving a vehicle, and whether it be, you know, a mother driving with her kids in the backseat, being distracted by a DBR, children arguing, whatever. Those of us that are experienced, those of us that are inexperienced, we just need to be mindful of our surroundings, both pedestrians and drivers. So this is what this committee is going to form, and we're going to come up with some ideas. These young folks want to make a stand and take a stand in our community, and I totally support them, and I will do anything and everything I can to get the resources to those folks. So those folks have my contact information, but I just, you know, some of them were supposed to be here tonight to speak, so that's why I'm bringing this up. It's a little intimidating to come in and speak to a governing body. I've been on the other side, and, you know, I'm still struggling with being on this side, speaking publicly sometimes, but I will let you know that I'm leading that effort and will continue to keep people abreast of what's going on with it.
Do any other Commissioners have any comments, anything they want to add to that?
I'll just add that Ms. Gilbert and I have been talking about this today, and I'm going to assist her in any way that I can.
Okay.
While you're discussing that particular issue, the issue is Puddin Ridge Road and safety, and the county has been in contact with DOT to discuss any possible safety issues with Puddin Ridge Road. And Ms. Keane, I believe they told us that they would be coming out and investigate to see what could, should, or can be done to address any possible safety issues on Puddin Ridge Road. So I think the Board collectively and individually has all been kind of involved in looking to see over that situation from this past week.
I want to add one last thing. Mr. Scanlon spoke to Mr. Jennings's office today, and the safety people will be coming out to look at the road, and I've asked him to inquire about the possibility of meeting with those people, with the young people, when they're out here. So if he can get a date, and DOT is agreeable, we'll try to set that up, to have a meeting and just talk about their concerns.
Well, and my initiatives are throughout the county, not just any particular road, because even in my neighborhood, on any given time, driving in at night, there might be four or five teenagers and younger children walking four in a row, not even, you know, paying attention to drivers or, you know, being a pedestrian. So that's part of the education, is the pedestrian education also.
All right, very good. Moving on then to the public hearing section of the agenda. Item A, Public Hearing in Action, PB 12-12, A-1 Towing, Request for a Special Use Permit to Operate a Towing Impound Lot and Equipment and Material Storage Areas. The property is located at 1221 Ponton Lane, Tax Map 14, Parcel 3S, Poplar Branch Township. This is a request for a special use permit, and this is a nature of a quasi-judicial hearing, meaning that anybody that wants to speak to this matter must come forward and be sworn in. Only sworn testimony of a nature in which you are deemed to be expert is acceptable for these types of hearings. So everybody come forward and put your left hand on the Bible.
Feel that way too far.
Yeah, I've got that much more to go.
And it's crooked, too. I think the backside is. Okay, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I have another one come...
Two more.
All right, two more, okay. Let's do it. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
All right, thank you. Be seated, Mr. Woody, if you'll give us some background to this particular application, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a special use permit. The use permit specifically is for a towing and impound lot, equipment storage, stockpile areas, and contractor services. The property is currently zoned general business. You can see the three areas of the site pointed out with the arrows on the zoning map. This property is located within the villages at Ocean Hill, Plan Unit Development, Overlay District. Land use plan designates this area as full service in the Crowa Subarea. The parcel itself, the larger parcel, is 19.7 acres, but the area for which the use permit applies is actually 1.13 acres. So basically, the areas where you see the commercial zoning are the areas being considered for this use permit and the uses I just mentioned, but again, the larger parcel is approximately 20 acres. And this site does have some history that accompanies it. The original use permit issued for a towing and impound lot dates back to the early 2000s. An access road at that time was built in the wrong location. Fast forward a decade, on September 7, 2010, the Board of Commissioners moved to extend the use permit for the towing company with the condition that an access road be constructed within the existing legal easement and that that access road be constructed by December 31, 2010. Staff went out in early 2011, and at that point, the permit or the access road was not constructed, and subsequently, the use permit was revoked for A-1 Towing. What's happened now is the road has been put in or built within the easement, as was discussed at previous public hearings, and now we are before you tonight presenting a new SUP application. So the old one's been revoked, it's gone. This is a new application for these uses I just mentioned. In your case analysis, as we always do, there is a suggested criteria and staff findings. As you know, for a special use permit, you have to make seven findings in order to issue the permit. I'm not going to read those findings individually, but I'll note that they are in the staff report, and staff has suggested findings for each of those. Going back, the primary issue with this permit in the past has been providing legal access, which we think staff thinks has been resolved at this point, and so we are including that information in the findings. The TRC, the Technical Review Committee, and the staff has reviewed this permit request. Staff does recommend conditional approval. There's a number of conditions that are outlined in the staff report that the staff is recommending. I'm going to go through those real quickly. I'm not going to read each condition individually, but I'm going to kind of group them together and just summarize some of the themes for our recommendation. One is that the access to the site be maintained and that regular maintenance of the access road be provided, so we want to make sure the access is there and it's maintained. The impound lot is not used for storage of non-towing-related vehicles. That the impacts on wetlands be minimized and that drainage be managed in a way to avoid standing water on the site, are some of the conditions. No hazardous waste material be stored on the site. Adequate access for fire and rescue purposes be provided at all times. Also, staff has recommended setbacks for storage areas from property boundaries and wetland areas. And then finally, staff is recommending that, should the BOC issue the permit, that a final site plan be approved by the TRC, showing any conditions that are included in tonight's approval, if that should occur. Planning Board heard this use permit request at their June meeting, for which the Planning Board recommended approval of this request, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Woody?
Just, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of accesses off NC 12 over the last couple of years. How about clearly delineating this particular access for me? Is that it? Is that the one that was approved in 2001?
That is, that is the location of the original approval.
That we approved in 2001?
Yes. The access that was built and was used was here.
Okay, that was the one that was not authorized.
That's right. If you take the 2001 approval, it had a distance measurement from Coral Lane, and if you measure that distance, it would have been where today's current road is built, which is the top yellow line there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Woody, is that Coral Lane that's straight across on this access?
Coral Lane is just off the map. It is probably, it's going to be off the map, but probably here.
All right, what street is that straight across from the access we're talking about?
Bismarck, but it does not, it does not connect to NC 12.
No, okay, I see. Got you. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
What is the length of this access? Will they have to improve it all the way back to A-1 Towing?
We've only required it be improved from NC 12 to the existing Ponton Lane easement, which has been historically used as an access drive. I can get the length off the site plan. I'll check that in a minute.
When this operation was used before, they used the Ponton Lane access then as well?
Yes, they did. That is correct.
And that's the one that joins Coral down there, is across from Coral.
Right, that's right. Ponton Lane is an easement that runs from Coral, really back to Buddy Ponton's house, which is back through the Fish and Wildlife property.
I think if everyone would remember, though, there were some issues with wits and this and that and other as far as commercial stuff's concerned. That's the reason they put the new road in.
Right. Yeah, there was wetlands, I think, in the way.
So it's improved all the way from NC 12 to Ponton Lane?
Yes, sir. There's a gravel access road that was put in by the applicant from NC 12 to Ponton Lane through this easement.
And the county also uses this easement, correct?
The county does need access to a well site or a future well site, so yes, we have authorization to use the easement.
Any other questions for Mr. Woody? Anyone here to speak for the applicant? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Bickford, PO Box 2225 Kitty Hawk, North Carolina. Ladies and gentlemen, I wrote down that I would speak, but I really don't intend to. At that point, nobody else had showed up, so I made sure that I could be here. I am the owner, and I'm free and willing to answer any questions that you may have later.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bickford, while he's there? Mr. Bissell, welcome.
Thank you. Just to let you know, both the, not only the landowner, but the applicant is here. I'm here representing the engineering firm. The attorney is here, representing the applicant. There's a representative of the company that did the survey work for the easement, so I think we pretty well have the bases covered and can answer any questions you have. As Mr. Woody said, the use was approved in 2001 and then was re-approved last year, or rather, in 2010, and expired at the end of the year. And the county basically said, come back when the access road is constructed in the right place, and so that's basically what we're doing. Now, the access road is finally constructed in the right place. There were some delays in getting permits from the Corps of Engineers and so forth, but everything has been done in accordance with the permits, and so we're here to ask your blessing on resuming this use, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Bissell? Thank you. Any other speakers for the applicant?
Michael Cherry, 519 Canary Lane in Swan Beach. I'm the applicant, as you know, on this project, and we've worked really diligently to make sure that we got all the details and the bases covered. We started with the attorney and working with Ike on the easement. We had the easement penned by Quibbles and Associates, and Mr. Michael Strater from Quibbles is here to speak if you have any questions for him. The site work was done by Mr. Bissell with Bissell Professional Group. We've just, you know, as we've gone through TRC, we made sure that any comments at all from James Mann, his fire marshal, to anybody, Ben, any issue, please let us know, and we would address it. We went through Planning Board, same thing, unanimous approval there, so we're here in front of you tonight to please ask for your blessing so that we can continue and finally, after a decade, I think, of off and on, get this straight. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Cherry? Thank you. Of the others, I have signed up Matt Reggaller, it looks like. Is that correct?
My name's Matt Reggaller. My office is down in Nagseth. I live in Manio. I am here not so much to talk about what the applicant intends to do. I don't think, oh, let me do say, I do represent Ocean Hill in this, I guess. Everyone ought to know that. They don't have a dog in the fight in what they want to do on the property. Their issue is more to do with the access. And every, as Mr. Woody had stated, and I think a lot of people in the room realize, this has a lot more history, and me being involved in it for about a week, everybody in here probably knows a little more about this than I do and what's been going on in the past. The two issues that I did want to raise, there's a settlement agreement in a related civil matter that the parties had entered into, Mr. Bickford, Mid-Atlantic, and Ocean Hill. That agreement gave Ocean Hill the right, or Gerald Friedman specifically, the right to relocate that easement if he needed to. As of last week, he had notified me, and I had provided notice to Mr. McCree and Mr. Bickford's attorney, Mr. Sharp, that they did intend on relocating that easement. From what I understand, the purpose is aesthetic to allow sort of a fence, basically, to block the view of what's going to be over there on the property. That's one issue that they had asked that I raised. The other issue, this is a real specific easement from Highway 12 back to the wastewater So it's going from point A to point B. It's for access from point A to point B, ingress, egress. What this is doing is allowing this easement to now provide access from point A to point C. In my opinion, that's expanding the scope of the easement, first of all. Again, the easement is real specific, access from A to B. This is providing access other than from A to B. Also, there's something called overburdening an easement. There's a purpose. When you enter into an agreement and an easement's given, a lot of times, there's a purpose for that easement. It's hard to imagine that at the time the easement agreement was done back in 2001 that anyone contemplated tow trucks, towing vehicles up and down the easement, however often it happens. I don't believe that was in the contemplation of the parties. Those are really the two issues that I wanted to raise, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I have a representative from Ocean Hill here as well.
Okay, just procedurally, let me make comment. It appears we've opened the public comment, because I was really addressing applicants. I didn't know which side folks were on signing up, but since you're already up and speaking, I assume you're an attorney for Ocean Hills?
Yes, sir.
Okay. or rather, in 2010, and expired at the end of the year. And the county basically said, come back when the access road is constructed in the right place. And so that's basically what we're doing. Now, the access road is finally constructed in the right place. There were some delays in getting permits from the Corps of Engineers and so forth, but everything has been done in accordance with the permits. And so we're here to ask your blessing on resuming this use. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any question for Mr. Bissell? Thank you. Any other speakers for the applicant?
Michael Cherry, 519 Canary Lane in Swan Beach. I'm the applicant, as you know, on this project. And we've worked really diligently to make sure that we got all the details and the bases covered. We started with the attorney and working with Ike on the easement. We had the easement penned by Quibb and Associates and Mr. Michael Strater from Quibb is here to speak if you have any questions for him. The site work was done by Mr. Bissell with Bissell Professional Group. We've just, you know, as we've gone through TRC, we made sure that any comments at all from James Menz, Fire Marshal, to anybody, Ben, any issue, please let us know, and we would address it. We went through Planning Board, same thing, unanimous approval there. So we're here in front of you tonight to please ask for your blessing so that we can continue and finally, after a decade, I think, of off and on, get this straight. Thank you.
Any question for Mr. Cherry? Thank you. Of the others I have signed up, Matt Reggaller, it looks like, is that correct?
My name's Matt Reggaller. My office is out in Nagseth. I live in Manio. I am here not so much to talk about what the applicant intends to do. I don't think, oh, let me do say, I do represent Ocean Hill in this, I guess. Everyone ought to know that. They don't have a dog in the fight in what they want to do on the property. Their issue is more to do with the access. And every, as Mr. Woody had stated, and I think a lot of people in the room realize, this has a lot more history. And me being involved in it for about a week, everybody in here probably knows a little more about this than I do and what's been going on in the past. The two issues that I did want to raise, there's a settlement agreement in a related civil matter that the parties had entered into, Mr. Bickford, Mid-Atlantic, and Ocean Hill. That agreement gave Ocean Hill the right, or Gerald Friedman specifically, the right to relocate that easement if he needed to. As of last week, he had notified me and I had provided notice to Mr. McCree and Mr. Bickford's attorney, Mr. Sharp, that they did intend on relocating that easement. From what I understand, the purpose is aesthetic to allow sort of a fence, basically, to block the view of what's gonna be over there on the property. That's one issue that they had asked that I raised. The other issue, this is a real specific easement from Highway 12 back to the wastewater So it's going from point A to point B. It's for access from point A to point B, ingress, egress. What this is doing is allowing this easement to now provide access from point A to point C. In my opinion, that's expanding the scope of the easement, first of all. Again, the easement is real specific, access from A to B. This is providing access other than from A to B. Also, there's something called overburdening an easement. There's a purpose. When you enter into an agreement and an easement's given, a lot of times, there's a purpose for that easement. It's hard to imagine that at the time, the easement agreement was done back in 2001, that anyone contemplated tow trucks, towing vehicles, up and down the easement, however often it happens. I don't believe that was in the contemplation of the parties. Those are really the two issues that I wanted to raise. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I have a representative from Ocean Hill here as well.
Okay, just procedurally, let me make comment. It appears we've opened the public comment because I was really addressing applicants. I didn't know which side folks were on signing up. But since you're already up and speaking, I assume you're an attorney for Ocean Hills?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we actually are now in the public comment period with that. And the applicant will have a chance to rebut, of course, any of this testimony. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Reggala while he's up there?
I have one. I have one. Would you not agree, though, that the easement that goes to Mr. Bickford's property, that he can assign folks to be able to use that easement under the settlement agreement that was?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that's clear, and I think that's in the settlement, specifically in the settlement agreement itself.
My question is, what's point A? What's point B? And what's point C?
In the, in reference to what I just said, I would say point A is Highway 12.
Okay.
Point B is the wastewater site.
Okay.
That's what, that's the language of the easement in that 2001 deed.
Okay.
Point C would be the A1A or the A1 towing facility.
So you're saying there is not an easement for, to go to that facility?
Not according to the language of that 2001 deed. I mean, there may be something else out there that I haven't seen, but the 2001 deed, I believe, is specific. This is an easement for ingress, egress, from Highway 12 to the wastewater site.
And the settlement agreement didn't address that, whatever the agreement?
I don't believe it modified it in any way, if that's what, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
I've got, and I can look here. It's the 2001, September 5th, 2001 deed between Ocean Hill Properties and Mid-Atlantic Builders. An easement of ingress, egress, and access to and from North Carolina Highway 12, also known as Ocean Trail, and the property upon which the water treatment and wastewater treatment facilities for the villages at Ocean Hill are located, same being an easement 30 feet and with, being described as follows.
So I guess my question is, is what, there's reference to settlement agreement. What does that settle in regards to easements? What does that address in regards to this easement, or does it not?
Well, no. It specifically says, and again, as far as Mr. Sharp may be able to speak better to what this settlement agreement was intended, I wasn't involved in this underlying suit. I've got a copy of the settlement agreement for the commissioners if you'd like to see it. But it says on the first page, and this is referred to in this agreement as the F-30 easement, "If the F-30 easement is in use, Bickford will cooperate in the event Gerald needs to relocate the access. The remainder of the platted 30-foot easement along the south line will be abandoned." I've got a copy, I think I've got a copy for everybody if you'd like to see the settlement agreement. I only have one copy of the deed, but I'm happy to.
I guess I'm trying to figure out, what you're trying to say is, is the property owner is saying that he does not agree for this easement to be used. Is that what you're saying?
The easement in the deed, he doesn't have any issue with. But I think initially, the settlement agreement, the way I read it, gives them the right to relocate it. And that's now what their intent is.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I mean, in 2010, we wrestled with this again. There was an issue with the easement that was already there. That was the reason the new easement was permitted and has moved forward. So what has changed since then and now? I mean, the assumption was that the new easement would settle the issues and would allow the undertakings that were taking place there.
Other than the underlying settlement agreement that looks like was done in June of 2011, I'm not sure what else. I mean, specific on the ground, what's changed? I'm not sure if I understand.
Well, I mean, the reasoning now that there's resistance to the new easement that in 2010 was being told to us that was agreed upon by everybody to move forward with.
What I've been told is the reason for their desire to relocate the easement at this point has to do with their future plans for their property and what they believe, how they believe this use will affect the value of their property. They don't, they don't have any standing to oppose what Mr. Bickford would like to, what they would like to use this property for. But he, my client wants to protect their interest, and they believe that erecting a fence or some other blocking mechanism is what they need to do.
Mr. Chairman, another question.
Go ahead.
Over my calls, please.
First of all, second, my first question is, who owns Ponton Lane? Who owns that?
I am not sure. I believe it may be Mr. Bickford, but I'm not, I'm honestly not positive on that.
Okay, so what we're talking about tonight is the second easement to Ponton Lane from 12 to Ponton Lane, is that right?
Yes.
2010, this new, new easement was granted from the first easement. And now your client wants to go to a third easement.
He hasn't, doesn't, hasn't taken a position on what, how they access it. I mean, whether or not Ponton Lane and Coral Lane are open and available, I honestly don't know. But what they're saying, I think what, what Ocean Hill, the F-30 easement as it exists is their desire to move it. If they would like to continue using, from what I understand, they had been using these, I forget how it was referred to, it was the second easement that Mr. Woody had illustrated on there.
But Commissioner Oddlet talked about one easement that, okay, we had, we made an agreement in 2010, I think he said, so we're gonna go to easement B. Now, your client doesn't like easement B, he's looking for?
Easement C.
Easement C. That's the way I understand it. Is that right? And then what I'm afraid of is then we go to easement C, and then next year, oop, let's go to D. If I'm wrong, please tell me.
It's, I don't know that that's an incorrect statement. I don't know what, and again, I wasn't party to what had happened in 2010. If the easement that they're seeking to use now is the one that Ocean Hill is intending on moving. So I'm not sure which easement, I mean, if.
Okay, well, can we go back to the original easement, then?
I have a question. Let me address one to Mr. McCree, I think may have clarified this. This application for a special use permit essentially is the county, if it grants this special use permit, saying that the operation of A1 towing and via access from 12 to whichever way they go, but this easement is the one that they've applied for, which apparently they have some right to use now. That's what we're here to determine. If that comes about and then the grantor of that easement decides to move the easement, from my way of thinking, that then becomes a legal issue between Mr. Bickford or A1 towing and the grantor of that easement, which really doesn't have anything to do with that special use permit.
I think that's correct analysis.
So we really then aren't concerned with what the grantor of the easement and the applicant are going to do with that in the future. We're just here now to decide whether or not the terms and conditions of the application have been met for granting the special use permit.
I think if I understood what he said to begin with, this is, he does not have an easement to get A1 towing as it stands today, if you go back to the 2001 being point A to point B.
Well, my question would be if the easement suffices to get them from NC-12 to Ponton Lane, and Ponton Lane is the access back there, after from that point on where the easement goes is moot.
But they're utilizing the easement granted in 2001, and that spells it out. Is that what I understood you to say, sir?
I thought it was 2010 on this second.
No. The original easement that was granted in 2001.
But this superseded that. Is that right? The new easement, easement B superseded easement A.
The, the new easement is approximately 300 or 400 yards to the north.
But does the new easement say A1 towing site is included in it? I think that's the question he raised.
So you're saying that Mr. Bickford owns it, but he can't let A1 tow and use it?
I, he might own it to there, but he's got to get to there first. He's crossing somebody else to get to his easement.
But you're saying, my question is, and I'm slow, Mr. Bickford, the question I'm, I have to answer is, does Mr. Bickford have a right to let somebody else through a lease use that? Am I saying that right?
Well, Mr. Reggala indicated that, yes, he did have the right to sign access.
But he doesn't have a way to get to NC-12.
If he, if he's, if he's, if there's an easement there and Mr. Bickford can assign who he wants to use that easement, then by all means, he does have a way of getting there.
If I may help you, I think.
Please.
From my, my reading of the September 2001 deed of easement, it, it appears clear to me that the area in which the easement, the F-30 easement has been located and is part of this application is in the appropriate place. Now, that deed of easement provides for an additional easement area, and that's what Mr. Woody had put up on the board a moment ago. This, this yellow is the entirety of the easement granted or conveyed to Mid-Atlantic, Mr. Bickford's company. But as you see, he's only chosen to utilize or improve a portion of that easement to reach his property there and cross into Ponton Lane. I don't know there's anything that requires necessarily someone who holds an easement to improve the entirety of the easement area in which they have a right to. Mr. Bickford apparently has, has just chosen to improve that portion that gets him to an area that he can cross over into his property and proceed on. These two properties obviously share a common boundary line. It's also important, I think, to note the language of the 2001 easement in any event says that it is being conveyed for ingress and egress and access to and from North Carolina Highway 12 and the property upon which the water treatment and wastewater treatment facilities for the villages at Ocean Hill are located. Well, at the time that this was conveyed, and of course, as appears even now, the, certainly the, the area in which the water treatment plant was located is on Mr. Bickford's property. And so it would seem to me that this F-30 area that's been improved, leading to Mr. Bickford's property and Ponton Lane, certainly leads to where the water treatment plant was located on Mr. Bickford's property. Now, of course, that's owned by the county. But it seems to me it gets to, it gets him to the place that was set forth in the deed of easement, in addition to his right to access further north where the wastewater plant is located.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. McCree, on your professional legal opinion, does the application meet the criteria of all the settlements in the past?
Well, I mean, if you've heard.
Based on Mr. Woody's recommendation?
You've heard the testimony of, of Mr. Woody. I think, I think what, I guess I'm speaking to is from my reading of the deed of easement from 2001 and the settlement agreement between the parties. And of course, I wasn't a party to that settlement agreement, obviously, but the settlement agreement established from these public records, Mr. Bickford's right and ability to improve the F-30 easement in order to access his property.
So you agree that this?
It, it appears to me on its face that that's what he has done.
And I believe the operative phrase in there is to access the property upon which the wastewater?
Yes.
And water plant, rather than to access those particular facilities.
Right.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for Mr. Reggala?
I was just gonna ask, Ike, have you seen this settlement agreement they're talking about?
Yes.
2011?
Yes. In fact, we received a copy of it when it was executed last year. The county did.
What does that mean exactly?
Well, what, what it did is several things. Again, with regard to the easement issue, there are some other things that apparently on its face were handled in the course of the settlement agreement, but it speaks to various easements. It speaks to the existing easement, which is the easement area south of the highlighted easement area.
Is the existing easement, easement A, the original?
Yes, that, that is what Mr. Bickford, Mid-Atlantic, and many others, including the county, were utilizing with the permission of the, of the property owner, Ocean Hill, to cross there onto Ponton Lane. That became the issue all along, is that that was not an acceptable continuat, it was not acceptable to continue to use that as the easement for all these parties to access Ponton Lane. And so that was why there was a push, as you recall, back in 2010, to get into the F, what is known now as the F-30 easement. The settlement agreement goes further to say that basically if Coral Lane becomes on, is not available for commercial use, and if by June, by June 1, 2012, then Mid-Atlantic, Mr. Bickford was required to cease use of what we know as the existing easement, that southern one, and was authorized and provided for in the settlement agreement to go forward with the permitting and construction, other things necessary to improve the F-30 easement.
Which is B.
Which is B, and, and subject of tonight's application, to access Ponton Lane. That apparently, from the, on the face of the application, is what Mr. Bickford has now done in order to now be before you, seeking approval of the special use permit.
But the next part of that is the owner can move the easement?
It, it does say if the F-30 easement is in use, and I take it it's not in use yet because you haven't approved it as for the special use permit, but if the F-30 easement is in use, Bickford will cooperate in the event Gerald needs to relocate the access.
So you're saying that has nothing to do with what we're looking at tonight?
In my opinion, the settlement agreement is not relevant to the decision that you're making tonight. I mean, if the parties seek to exercise certain rights within the settlement agreement, that's gonna be a, a issue as between those two parties.
So what, Chairman says it's a civil issue?
Yeah, ultimately, it will be.
So if Mr. Friedman comes in and says, I want to move the easement, will it require an amendment to the special use permit?
I guess that raises, that may raise that question as to whether it would require an amendment at that time. But certainly, I don't see that there's anything that prevents you going forward tonight if you find sufficient facts in order to support a decision to issue a special use permit. Nothing I see prevents you from issuing that permit, at least as it relates to the easement issue.
And if, Mr. Etheridge or Commissioner Etheridge, and at a minimum, at a minimum, if they relocated that easement, it would at least require an amendment to the site plan. So there, there is another review function that does have to happen if that is relocated, because they do have to maintain some sort of access throughout.
And the owner would have to apply in order to do that?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So it wouldn't be just a matter of them arbitrarily deciding to do it without coming before us?
We would ask for the site plan to be revised and approved.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for any of the parties that have spoken so far? Thank you, Mr. Reggala.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sharp, did you wish to make any comments?
No, I think Mr. McCree is spot on with his analysis. I don't think that the movement of the easement has anything to do with what we're here about tonight. So unless you want more from me on that, I'll, I can talk all night about it if you want, but I think it's.
We'd rather you didn't, but that's okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. Michael Strater, did you have any further comments? Did you want to add to this?
Unless anyone has any questions regarding the location of the easement, then no, I don't have anything further to say.
Any questions for Mr. Strater? Thank you. Anyone else that was sworn in have any comments or additions to this? Seeing nothing, I will close the public hearing then. Okay?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Woody.
Okay.
Was the request filed and advertised in accordance with county procedures?
Yes.
And we, we've talked this to death. I know that staff is aware of the access limitations and that type of stuff in the, in the agreement.
We are.
And does the applicant's request satisfy the special use permit criteria?
In our opinion, it does.
Okay. With that, I'm ready to make a motion. I make a motion that we move to approve PB-1212 with the finding of fact and staff recommendations included in the case analysis.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item of business, public hearing, PB, public hearing in action, PB-12-11, Ryan Anderson, request for a special use permit for outdoor entertainment, special events, and light manufacturing, properly located 5650 and 5666, Carrottoke Highway, Tax Map 84, Parcs 19A and 19B, Poplar Branch Township. And here again, since this is a special use permit, the parties that want to speak to this must come forward and be sworn in. If you have ten on the Bible, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
It's a Dennis always.
That's right.
That's right.
Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a special use permit for outdoor entertainment, special events, and light manufacturing, and the property is located on the west side of Carritoke Highway in, in this Poplar Branch Township, Lower Currytuck. And real quickly, to give a little bit of context, what, what's happening here is that this is, is the site of Digger's Dungeon. There is a track there set up for RC cars. There's a diner, there's a number of diner there. There's a manufacturing area for, for working on and, and manufacturing monster trucks. All, all this stuff, what this permit's doing tonight is, is one is asking for the ability to expand upon the RC racing that exists on the track, but it's also taking all these uses that, that exist and putting those under one consolidated permit. So it's actually a good thing, so we're getting everything into one permit for both properties, for the entire site. The property currently is on the, most of it's on GBs, you can see, the road furnished parts are GB, then of course, the rear portions of the tract are, are zone agricultural. It's designated as limited service in the 2006 land use plan. The site's about 11.75 acres, and it's served by county water and has on-site septic system for wastewater service. Again, the, the county has issued a number of permits to this property through the years. Some have been through this board, some have been administrative, and what this permit does tonight is puts all of it into one permit, and we have one approved plan for the property. Specifically, some of the uses you see there, and I went through this a little bit, but power wheels, races, monster truck rods, special events that include a number of things. There's a retail store, there's manufacturing, repairing, and maintenance of trucks. And I also want to note that, that what you'll see in the near future is there's going to be an expansion of the truck repair and maintenance area. They're adding a new building to the rear of the existing building, and that too is included in this application request. There is special use permit criteria and findings in your staff report. I'm not going to read all those, but staff's opinion, opinion is it does meet the criteria for issuing a use permit. The technical review committee has reviewed this request and does recommend conditional approval. I'm not, again, I'm not going to read all the conditions in the staff report, but I'll just note quickly that most of the conditions that are put forward by the technical review committee relate to that when special events are conducted on the site, that those events be coordinated with the sheriff's office, emergency medical services, building inspector, and fire marshal for at least 30 days prior to that event, and that notification is to allow those service providers to have time to make sure resources are available to man that special event and any, any others that may be happening the same, during the same timeframe. Otherwise, most of the conditions are just related to how special events are, are conducted and how the light manufacturing is allowed in that zoning district. Planning board heard this request at their June meeting, and they did recommend approval of the request. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Woody? Hearing none, would the applicant like to make any comments?
No, I'm good if you guys are good. You just, you know, you let me know if you need to know anything, and I'll tell you what we got going on, but, um, you know, basically what we're doing there on the property is we're, we're just trying to grow. And, um, you know, what we're doing right now is, uh, you know, we're, we're putting down a footprint, hoping that the Felds will be here with us, and we want the Mid-County Bridge and all that good stuff, and that's always been a dream of mine. And, um, just growing this property and doing what we're doing is, uh, is just a part of us living and keeping the family going. And, um, you know, and we just, you know, we appreciate you guys working with us. You know, I've had my differences, you know, a few years back with you guys. I was always thinking you guys were against me. And now I've really figured out how the real world on this end of Currytuck works, and this is it, and I do appreciate what you people are doing for us. And we'll continue to grow, and we want to grow together. And if anybody's got any questions, I'll answer them, and, um, if not, we'll, we'll move on.
Just a matter of procedure here again, though, in case that there might be some individual in Carritoke County that who does not in fact know who you are, would you state your name and address for the record?
Okay, I'm Dennis Anderson. I live at 5650 Carritoke Highway, part-time, and I live in Corova Beach the other part of the time, on Ocean Pearl. I don't even know my address over there, but, um, I'm, I'm a local native of Chesapeake, Virginia, and I live at the Gravedigger Site or work at the Gravedigger Site, and that's who I am. Dennis Anderson, the Gravedigger, been bad to the bone for 30 years.
And your sidekick is?
This is Ryan Anderson. This is, uh, this is my mid, my middle-aged son, and we have, there's three of the Anderson boys, and they'll be taking over probably in about 11 years. I'm going to lay on the couch and watch these guys go, and I'll just walk around the property and gripe at them every once in a while.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, I'm assuming you're comfortable with the conditions that Mr. Woody set out as far as working with the sheriff and fire and all that stuff?
Yes, yep, and, you know, what we put on up there, when we say special events, mainly it's RC events that we have. We have Easter egg hunts. I think that the time that we may need to bring in security or, you know, bring the, the law enforcement in is, you know, everybody hounds me every year to bring back the haunted forest. And now that the boys are older and they have their friends, we may bring back the haunted forest. If we do bring back the haunted forest, we'll contact everybody for all of our safety needs and everything that we need to, um, you know, to, to organize our event, but, um, everything that we have going on right now really is small, and we don't charge admission to come to the property. You know, that thing, you ride by there, we have tents and everybody set up. That's RC stuff, that No Limit RC comes in. We have World Finals there, been doing it for seven years on the same property. The Power Wheels thing is an extreme Power Wheels race for the kids, you know, that's free. The Easter egg hunt, that's free. It's to promote people to come to the property, so we can sell them a tee shirt and a hot dog, basically is what it is. But when we start doing special events, yeah, I totally agree that we'll all get together, we'll give you a 30-day notice, tell everybody what's going on, and we'll, we'll move forward.
One more question. How's your son that got injured in Las Vegas?
This is him right here, just got his neck race off three days ago.
Good for you.
He's doing great.
I have, I have one question.
Did I understand you to make a commitment, you would be the lead vehicle across the Mid-County Bridge when it opens?
Yes, we want to do that. We really do. I'd, I'd love to do that, and, and also, while I'm here, I know I'm taking up a bunch of time, but, um, we want to do another promotional swim. We done it to the Whalehead Club in 1994. Well, Adam, my oldest son, wants to break my record, so he wants to go to the Whalehead Club and continue on and go into the ocean and make a loop out in the ocean with his truck and come back.
If he, if he would do that Wednesday evening about 6 o'clock, I'd be glad to ride along with him, because I'm sure it's going to be quicker than driving.
Exactly, well, we might plan that for next year, 4th of July.
Dennis, that would be a good one for the 4th of July in Corova.
Yes, exactly. I know it, it will, and we're really serious about it.
I, I have just one question. How many people do y'all employ in your shops there now?
Um, right now, it, it's really odd, it's an odd little horse, the way that we've got that thing set up, because so many people come through the shop. We have 80 employees that work in that shop. They're never there all at one time. We rotate them around down through the roads, but we usually have about 27 people on site, but it's around 80, I think it's like 88 employees that run through that, run through those shops up there.
And, and the, the expansion that you're going to do on the back will probably bring more employees there, correct?
Yes, it will, because Mr. Feld's goal is to have 60 trucks. There's 43 trucks in the fleet of Monster Jam right now. Their goal, uh, their goal by 2017 is to have 60 monster trucks. 30 of them will be right here, and Currytuck will be housed here, but this is the main monster truck hospital and always will be. The other 30 of the fleet will be housed in Palmetto down in Florida. So Monster Jam is, is here to stay.
Yeah, I did not see in the conditions of the permit that Carritoke County, North Carolina, be painted on the sides of the trucks anywhere. I think, you know, we discussed that prior before.
I know y'all hate to kill the wheel thing, but I'm making a Currytuck County tee shirt just for you guys, all right?
I'm all set, because I got your autograph here, if anybody's-
I have one. One last thing.
The only, the only thing I want to see is you really whip maximum destruction or whatever there is.
I discovered him, man, you gotta watch TV. I discovered him two weeks in a row, double down.
Mr. Etheridge has a question to come in.
Well, comment, when Dennis talks about for the children and the kids, he means that from the heart, because last year, I know Commissioner Idlin and myself and one other commissioner, I think, attended the ceremony where you were given like man of the year for-
Gone. You mean the one where I spoke, you know, entered, you know, thanks, yeah.
It was, it was the Chris Gracious Award.
Yeah.
I have, yeah, senior moment, I'm granted those occasionally. But, you know, he was recognized by the Make-A-Wish people.
Yes.
And it was, uh, it was touching to see somebody from Currytuck County who has a worldwide presence and recognition to, to bring not only recognition to Carritoke County, but to his heart for what he's trying to do. We congratulate you on that again.
Well, thank y'all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we read, reread the exploits on your Facebook page about all the block parties and things, too. I just cannot imagine driving a monster truck down the streets of Chicago to a birthday party for a kid for one of these-
Hey, we have to do what we gotta do. It's a contest. If the kids win, we will be there.
Great, it's fabulous. Do I have any other folks that would like to comment or address this particular matter before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, move to approve PB 1211 with finding of fact, staff recommendations included in the case analysis.
I second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nice, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll be back, we're going to continue to grow, thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, board appointments, appointments to the ABC Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we leave that one alone.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think Mr. Scanlon would like to correct me.
No, I'm, I'm just asking a clarification. Leave it alone, does that mean to go with the recommendations in the agenda package for appointments?
Leave it like it is.
Okay.
No new appointments.
Right. All right, appointment to the Board of Adjustment.
Uh, that's my appointment, and I'm not prepared to make it tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, wait, I think, I think we're moving Teresa Doja, is that?
Right.
From alternate to full time?
That's correct, and it, so there, it creates a vacancy for his appointment. Your appointment just got put on the board, he's got a-
Make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, appointment to the Public Library Board of Trustees.
I think that's my appointment. I would like to appoint Shelley Haskell from Knott's Island.
All in favor? Second, okay, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointment to the East Alamo River Regional Library. That's one that was recommended to us, I think, by them, wasn't it?
It was the recommendation.
Ms. King?
Anybody that serves on the current, on the library board can be able to do it.
Is there anybody?
I nominate Norm Dom.
I second that nomination.
Has anyone asked any of these people if they're willing to take an extra assignment?
Dr. Dom told me anytime he could help, he'd be glad to do it.
Okay, that's good, then.
Okay, is that, we just have one position to fill? Okay, all in favor, Dr. Dom?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointment to the Tourism Board.
That's my appointment, I'd like to appoint Janice Farr.
Okay, she did an excellent job before. Appointment in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Designation of voting delegate to the NCAA C C Annual Conference.
Is that the one in August?
Well, I've asked to attend it, so, um-
Well, Mr. Etheridge has served us well there, and I'll make a motion that we reappoint him.
I second that motion.
For this term.
Do you accept their responsibility, Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries. Commissioners report, Mr. Martin?
Happy 4th of July, and just remember fireworks are illegal. Over on the Outer Banks, we have fires across the nation, we don't meet them in Currytuck. So be careful with the fireworks.
Mr. Etheridge?
Just remind everybody, this is the birthdate of our nation, great nation, and hearing the bell choir play, "God Bless America Tonight." Now more than ever, we need God to bless America. Thank you.
Good point. Mr. O'Neill?
Just a couple of quick things. First of all, when we send out the bills to everybody, is it a tax or a penalty? There seems to be some confusion as to what a tax is and a penalty is, so if you could clarify that, our next commissioner is meeting Mr. Scanlon. No, I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to thank Dan, and, and he contacted some of the emergency management people yesterday. Received some phone calls in Moayak about the power being out, and there was a lot of elderly people that weren't sure about when the power was going to come on, and it was extremely hot, a lot of them were living in trailers, and Dan and the emergency management got on it. They got with Dominion Power, and they got the power back on, but they were prepared to look after the folks up in Moayak in the event they couldn't get that on. The next issue is the Whalehead. When we do the fireworks, I believe it's the county safety policy that boats are not allowed to launch from the Whalehead Club site, nor are they allowed to go over and dock for the day, and I asked the county manager, please explain that. I've had several phone calls about it, or, over the last few years, and I'm sure some of y'all have as well, so that the residents over here will understand why they can't park their boats.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm happy to explain that. We'll start with, first of all, the Coast Guard will not allow us to have boats docked in that general area when we're shooting fireworks off. So right before and right after the show, there is a Coast Guard prohibition. We had a problem a couple of years ago before we enacted an all-day ban on, on the ramp there, where folks had gone over during the day, they had tied their boats up, they had gone somewhere either to the beach or they were on the grounds, but the boats were left unattended, and when it came time to start the fireworks show, again, because of Coast Guard regulations, we were prohibited from, at that moment, from starting the show because we had boats that were unattended, and it did create an issue with trying to hunt down the owners of those facilities, of those boats. A lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of energy, a lot of effort goes into the all-day activities that's put over there, and the committee that's responsible for putting that on ultimately decided that, and not to jeopardize in the future the start of a fireworks show, that it would be best if, for the entire day, we went ahead and banned use of the ramp on July 4th. And that ban is only on the ramp that's at the, the Whalehead Club. The ramps over here in the mainland are open and accessible, but folks will not be able to go over and tie up their boats or, or any kind of watercraft at the ramp or on the docks at the Whalehead Club, because that's actually the area that we shoot off the fireworks. I know it's created inconvenience for some folks, we've certainly gotten some phone calls, but the decision was made for, to be safe and to make sure that we had a, a good event and a safe event.
Mr. Idlin, comments?
Just everyone have a safe and very happy 4th of July weekend, and just, that's about it, thank you.
Mr. Patrick?
Two things, first of all, happy 4th of July, and we're the greatest country in the world, and we need to appreciate it. The other thing is this, something that's near and dear to my heart. Starting this week, we've started a new program in Currytuck County, it's called Currytuck Cares, and Currytuck Cares is a program where we will call seniors three times every day to make sure that they're safe, and if they don't answer on the third call, a deputy is dispatched to go check on them. We've had an issue where a senior gentleman fell through the attic, and they found him two days later with his legs hanging out of the, the ceiling. So it's called Currytuck Cares. If you have a senior that you'd like to register to get on the dial-up list, you can call the social, or the senior center, 23505, that's 2323505, and this is a great thing. Currytuck does care, and if there's anything that's near and dear to my heart, it's little kids and seniors, and I'm, I'm almost up to Plan B, I've got me a set of bells.
Ms. Gilbert?
I, I just want to wish everybody a nice 4th of July, have it safe, and, and enjoy
Have it safe and enjoy your celebrations. I would like for Mr. Scanlon to elaborate on maybe the time schedule for the events at the Whalehead Club. That hasn't really been advertised at our commissioners meeting.
Well, I apologize. I don't have the long list of all the events that are available, but certainly go to our website, and they certainly are published there.
Okay, so fireworks at 9:00, 9:30?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to add, too, that Wild Horse Days is going on at Heritage Park. They start actually tomorrow and then going through Thursday. A lot of nice events, so make sure you get a chance to go up there if you can and participate. One of the other things I'd like to point out to folks, too, we've talked about the seniors, the difficulty, a lot of people are having, of course, with power outages